By my clock and I hereby call to order the regular Planning Commission meeting for Ojai on April 21st, 2021. Is Sherri there or Cheryl or Cheryl? Cheryl, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, Chair Quilisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan.
Here.
Commissioner Lottis.
Here.
Commissioner Trent.
Here.
Commissioner Swift.
You're on mute, Commissioner Swift.
Here.
Ah, great, okay. That's good, all right, pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Nolan, would you lead us, please?
Yes. Are we gonna see the flag or should we just start? Whether we...
I think they're doing it for us, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
For all. Thank you very much. Oh, what happened to the view here again? Gallery view, there we go. Okay, um, public communications. Do we have any written or verbal or communications on items not on the agenda, or do we have anyone in the waiting room looking to speak to us tonight?
We have no public communications tonight.
Very good, okay. Next is our consent item, the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission for April 7th of this year. Did any commissioners have any refinements to the minutes? Commissioner Nolan, please, go ahead.
Yes, um, this is on discussion item number four, that was the tree permit T 20-037 for the Creekside Village. It basically in our motion that says, "The motion to continue the item to a date and certain awaiting advice from the applicant as to the availability of the arborist for additional details on the protected trees that are proposed for removal and pruning." I, I personally feel like I had more intention to in that, of course, I can't remember the exact wording, I guess I could have gone back and listened to it. But, um, part of the, um, request was for a more detailed uh, report from the arborist in addition to being able to attend, um, a future planning commission meeting. So I wanted that if, and of course, if everyone agrees.
All right. Uh, do you have specific words you'd like to see? I see Lucas is taking notes here.
Always taking notes.
Yeah, Lucas, was that enough, or do you need me to, um, restate?
You were just asking in addition to have the arborist provide a more detailed report as well as show up at the next, at the scheduled meeting, whenever it is.
Exactly.
And when you, when you say more detailed report, you're talking about the specific, um, trees that are scheduled for, um, the pruning and the removal.
Yeah.
The remove, yeah.
Right, those six are...
Exactly, the sycamore trees.
Sycamores and the oaks, okay.
The other tree we had listed were not covered, um, under the tree protection, even though they did list them with his overall plan, but these are specifically for the ones that are protected.
That are protected. Then I would say that we specifically identify that it's for the sycamores and the oaks that were identified within the report for that to be additional, um, clarifying information as to the pruning, how that, because I think really what it boiled down to is how that pruning was going to be taking place, because usually we see the, the limbs that are being identified as being removed, or the, the deadfall that's being removed as well.
Exactly, and more information as to why those trees were deemed hazardous.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Any, any other changes that another commissioner would like to see? I believe, Nikhil, we need to have a vote on that change to the minutes, right?
Correct, so you can do it as a two votes, uh, move to amend, uh, the minutes as, uh, proposed by, uh, Commissioner Nolan. And then after that, there can be a second vote, it probably best, makes sense to have a second vote to have a move to approve the minutes as amended.
Right, okay.
First a motion to amend and then second a motion to, uh, approve the amendment, amended minutes.
I take it Commissioner Nolan, you would make a motion to amend the minutes as you have stated. We have a second.
I'll second.
Very good, thank you.
Just, uh, I'm sorry, Steve, uh, not everyone was present at the last meeting, so I want to make, uh, you were recused for this vote on the minutes.
Who's recused?
Well, those who weren't present at the last meeting.
Jake.
Ah, okay, Mr. Swift is recused, okay, that's fine. Um, any other discussion? Then Cheryl, would you call the roll, please, on the amendment to the minutes?
Quilisi?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Lottis?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. And now, um, Commissioner Nolan, a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Yes.
Very good.
I can say it over again, but yes. I do make that.
For discussion purposes, I'll second it, any discussion? All right, Cheryl, would you call the vote on approving the minutes as amended, please?
Quilisi?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Lottis?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Terrific, all right, got that out of the way. Now, got to back up here, the, um, then we, then we need to talk about again, uh, site visits and ex parte contacts. Uh, we have, we have two sites, but I understand from Lucas that one of them is being pulled back, so...
And I'll mention that here after ex parte's.
Yeah, okay, the, the two sites in question are the First Baptist Church and the school board property on Ojai Avenue. I'm familiar with both venues and have had no ex parte contacts. Commissioner Nolan?
I'm also familiar and in the past have been to both sites and have had no, well, on the second item, I, I did actually speak with some of the people involved with that project, the farmer's market one, but the first one, no ex parte contacts.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Nolan? I'm sorry, uh, Commissioner Lottis?
Um, so I've had, I am familiar with both sites, but I've had no ex parte contacts and I will be, uh, recusing myself from item number two because I, I, I'm within 500 feet.
That's right, okay, and Commissioner Trent?
Um, same, familiar with both, uh, locations, no ex parte contacts for...
And Commissioner Swift, thank you.
I'm, I'm familiar with both sites as well, I've had no ex parte contact, however, I would have to recuse myself from the Chaparral um, because I live within 500 feet of that farmer's market proposed.
Okay. So we'll have, uh, two different groups of four commissioners looking at things. Lucas, what you think?
Before we go any further, I just, I want to make...
Yes, sir.
The, the item number three, which is the item regarding the similar use determination, which is case numbers, uh, ZC 21-051, uh, the farmer's market midweek at the Chaparral School District site. That item has been polled, what we're, um, the reason for it being polled is to allow for the applicant to, um, to provide additional information, the app, application is still incomplete and insufficient in the information that's been provided up to this point. So staff has, has made the determination to pull that item so that we can work with the applicant on that matter.
Okay, and it being a discussion item, we don't have to worry about when it's rescheduled?
No, yeah, don't have to worry about rescheduling.
Okay.
But, uh, one, one point I'd add, uh, to the commission is that given that it is going to come back to the commission at some point, um, now that it's been polled, I would, uh, advise commissioners to maybe not make any further comments on, on that particular, um, item.
Or, or the issues involved, right, okay, very good, very good. That's item two, okay, well, let's go on to item two then, the, uh, First Baptist Church monument sign, Lucas, would you take us through that, please?
I'm going to recuse, let's see.
Ah, yes, thank you very much.
She beat us to the punch.
She has left the room and only her name remains.
Yep, she has fully recused, so, and she is within 500 feet, uh, and we can actually, the applicant is here tonight as well, if I recall correctly, uh, Cheryl is, is the applicant as well as the, uh, sign company representative here?
Yes, we have Eric Compton and then two representatives.
Okay, can they hear us?
They can.
Okay, good.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, I apparently need to admit them to the meeting and then they can hear you.
You can bring, you can bring them in.
Okay.
So the proposal that we have tonight is a continued item from March 17th, at that meeting, there was a proposed monument sign that was brought before the commission for, um, discussion and consideration. Uh, that item was then continued to April 7th and then subsequently to this meeting tonight for April 21st for revisions to, um, to the freestanding monument sign, so since then, the applicant, and at that meeting on March 17th, I should note, there were three after an extensive, uh, discussion Q and A that went back and forth with the, with the sign company as well as the representative for the school district, or not the school district, the church, the church, sorry. There were really kind of three points that were brought forward. The first was a kind of a reduction in the, in the temperature of the lighting for that halo illuminated, um, monument sign to somewhere in the range of 2,700 to 3,000 Kelvin. The other, uh, two items included one, an introduction to regarding a cap around the sign itself to, to help to, to, um, reduce some of that glare, if not eliminate some of that glare, um, that could be coming from the street or even up into the sky. And then the last one was revision to the base material, the base material was an aluminum material, uh, looking for some sort of, uh, rock or wood like, um, or brick material.
More natural finish, you know?
Yeah, some, something else other than the aluminum that was proposed. The applicant went back with the sign company, um, made, made, made revisions and those revisions are what you see in the packet tonight. Those revisions include the color temperature reduced to 2,700 Kelvin, the introduction of a cap all the way around the monument sign, um, itself and, um, the, the revision to the base material being that Trex, um, faux, faux wood that you see that's really kind of being used as a back, as a background to the monument sign itself. So, um, with that, staff has reviewed the information as, as recommending approval based on the attached resolution that you have before your consideration tonight, subject to the conditions within that resolution. So with that, if the commission has any questions of, of staff, I could certainly answer them. Um, as you can see, the applicant as well as, uh, representative for, and I think it's Tina, yes, Tina with, um, the churches here as well.
Thank you. Uh, any questions for staff on this item? All right, then let's hear from the applicant, if, uh, whichever of you wishes to start, please start.
Tina is the more knowledgeable one on this. I'll let her, I'll let her speak first.
Okay, well, we did, um, get three, um, new options, the Trex for the base, um, as well as two stone options, we did like the stone options, but, um, the cost, it was going to increase the cost by about 25% and just in good conscience, being good stewards of our church's resources, we just couldn't go with that, so we did opt for the Trex because it is a more natural, um, wood, looks like wood, um, for the base and so that's why you see the Trex at the bottom as well, we, we did try to, um, look into those different options, but that, that was the, ultimately the one that we settled on.
Okay, and the, um, and it looks like you took care of the dark sky and glare and the temperature of the lighting.
Yeah, Eric can speak to that.
Okay, Eric, please.
Uh, yeah, we reduced the, the LEDs to a, a 2,700 Kelvin and we put the border, we ended up putting it all the way around the sign, we thought that looked better design-wise.
I thought so. All right, any questions for the applicants? Uh, Commissioner Nolan, please.
Just have a, a quick one, um, are you doing any landscaping or planting at the base?
We, um, we currently are, um, it used to be a huge lawn actually out there, all along the front, they, several years ago, we took that out and did a zero scape, it's really, it's a nice landscaping. Um, there, there is bark and there are, um, drought tolerant plants. I think the thought was to look at it, um, with just the bark, we can put some of the, um, some of the drought tolerant plants, um, at the base if that's preferred. Um, but it, uh, it's a really, um, the whole front of the church is really well landscaped, um, but we can put some, I don't, I'm trying to think of some of the plants that are out there, we have some sage and rosemary and some things that are just more drought tolerant out there.
Okay.
I should have brought up that, that question for staff. As I look at, at, uh, the code 10-2, section after 12, I think it is, that's landscaping, it didn't look to me like there was enough landscaping area involved in the project to require a landscaping plan. Can you talk to us about that?
Uh, yeah, there wouldn't be enough, um, given, given the small area that's being disturbed here. Uh, it's typically, well, it would be, it would be somewhere in the neighborhood of 500 to 2,500 square feet of disturbed area.
And we're talking more like 25, probably.
This area is not that large in terms of what's being disturbed, it's just...
Maybe 25 square feet, I mean,
Oh, yeah.
in the sign, uh, yes, Commissioner Nolan, please, go ahead.
Quilisi, I was referring to, um, under this, in the sign ordinance, um, it would be page 10 of 23 under Monument Signs, letter F, that landscaping shall be provided at the base of the supporting structure equal to the area of one face of the sign, for example, 20 square feet of sign area would require a minimum of 40 square feet of landscape area.
Okay. Okay. So, is that a problem to do a little landscaping around the base of the sign?
Um, no, we can certainly, um, do something that's in keeping with the rest of the...
Right, complement which we have, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, definitely.
I think that would then be added to our conditions of approval.
Okay, yeah, we're, we're happy to do that.
Okay.
Talk, talk, just add to the conditions of approval, compliance with that particular piece of the code.
Yeah.
Landscaping in compliance with 10-2-12, what is it?
Got to flip my page here.
It's 10-2-1607 subsection F.
Oh, that's right, it's in the sign ordinance, not the, not the landscape.
Yeah.
10-2-1607, okay.
So when you say landscaping, um, are you requiring, um, because we have bark and things like that, but you're specifically requiring, uh, plants, is that correct?
Yeah, the bark will be considered ground cover. We're talking about landscaping, so it'd have to be lime.
Put, put some more of those drought tolerant plants around the monument and I think that meets your needs. Commissioner Nolan, is that right? Terrific. Any other questions for the applicants? I had a few questions about the resolution itself. Uh, we'll be adding this to the conditions. But if we're, if we're ready to go... Oh, I'm sorry, first of all, oh, this is, this is a discussion item, not a public hearing, but we can still take public comment. Cheryl, do we have anyone who wants to comment from the public on this item?
I have no one here to make a public comment.
Okay. Then we will move to commission deliberation. Any questions of staff regarding the resolution with this one addition to it, I have a few, but I'd like to find out if anyone else does.
I'm open to listening to what you have, Commissioner.
Okay. Hearing none, let's, let's go to it, attachment B, page two, condition four. It begins by saying, "No other signs or banners shall be erected on the pro, on the property." And I would suggest that we add to that the phrase "as a result of this approval" because the second sentence then goes on to talk about uh, applying for more signs. But I think the intent was to say that this approval is specifically for the monument sign and and the approval extends no farther than the monument sign, is that about right, Lucas?
Precisely.
Okay. So that would be my suggestion is just to add the phrase "as a result of this approval" at the end of section, of sentence one. On condition five, it, uh, it says in part, "The above listed conditions" and, um, that excludes the conditions subsequent to number five. I would suggest that instead it read "The conditions contained in this resolution," which would then include all of them. Make sense to everybody? Okay.
Did you have that at the end, Steve, at the end of the sentence?
Uh, no, I would, instead of saying "The above listed conditions", I would substitute "The conditions contained in this resolution."
I got it.
Uh, or if you can say "The conditions can, contain herein or in this resolution", as, as, as it's written right now, it would exclude all the conditions that appear after that. So, yeah.
Okay, there we go.
Or you could simply move that condition to the end.
Yeah. Probably, probably less typing to do if we just change a few words. Where it is. On condition 10, line 3, it says, uh, it says in part, "Extended by the commission." But 10-2-3203A3 also talks about time extensions granted by the director for good cause. And so, I would suggest that instead of the phrase "extended by the commission", that we say "extended by the commission or the director."
And combine the two, yeah.
Just, just add, add the phrase "or the director" after "commission." We don't want to hamstring Lucas on this.
All right.
And, um, lastly, uh, condition 14, let me see, oh, that had to do with the landscaping and we've already taken care of that issue. So that's, that's all I have is three, three minor changes to the resolution. And I would, I would move to amend the resolution in those three specific spots, if there's a second or...
Can I add two more before we wrap this up?
Oh, please do.
Sorry, I didn't, I should have said something earlier, um, back on page two, number six and seven, um, I just want to note, "The lighting used for the haloed lettering and logo shall be soft white in color and not exceed 2,700." But, um, back on page two of two of the administration report, it, it, it opens it up to be between 2,700 and 3,000. So I just thought it might be good to make those match or give them the ability to go up to 3,000, or are we going to keep it at 2,700?
Eric, you said you, you had substituted lighting at 2,700?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
So maybe we keep that 2,700 in the resolution, as is then.
And then on number seven, um, it, it mentions that the, the monument sign shall be set on a timer and be shut off on or before 10:00 PM each night, but doesn't really specify what time it can come on. So I thought we might want to add a time like, say dusk or something, because otherwise the lights could come back on at eight in the morning and stay on all day.
I, I agree with using, uh, the word dusk. That's kind of standard and typical.
Is there, is there a legal definition of ducks, dusk, is it half hour before sunset or?
Um, well, because, uh, because of the, uh, of the time change, yeah. I mean, we, we could say dusk, I think it's a commonly accepted word is that when, uh, when it becomes dark, um, you know, when...
Want to light up the sign, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And that was in, uh, condition six, you said?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven, yeah.
Okay. Set on a timer to come on not before dusk and be shut off on or before 10 o'clock? Okay. So we have, uh, condition four and five and seven and, uh, 10, I think.
And we added the one that I had brought up about the landscaping. Is that correct? Yeah.
Yeah, in, in conformance with the sign, uh, section.
Exactly.
And that's, that's an additional condition which would be way at the end like number...
Nineteen, no, twenty.
Well, I, I would probably...
Put it in appropriately early on and misremember.
Okay, insert it where it's appropriate and, uh, renumber the conditions, I think that'd be fine.
Yep.
Any other changes that, uh, the commission would like to see? All right, then can we have a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion.
Go right ahead.
Okay. Flip my pages here. I'll make a motion that we adopt, uh, sign permit S20-012. Proposed freestanding monument sign with the haloed lettering and logo for the First Baptist Church located at 930 Grand Avenue, APN 022-0-081-160. The general plan designation, I don't need, I don't think I need to do the rest of it, um...
Probably not needed, yeah, okay.
Amendments to those existing conditions and the addition of the amendment regarding, um, requirement for landscape for the siding ordinance. And I believe the language has been hopefully recorded and if it isn't, let us know, we'll...
Yeah. And Tina and Eric, do you, you have a sense now of the changes that have been made to what's on paper? Okay.
Absolutely.
Anything, anything that's a problem there for you?
No.
Okay, and, uh, and Lucas said the school before, but I think, uh, Tina, you do do a lot of teaching, don't you?
Uh, actually, not, uh, well, I homeschool for my kids, but...
No, no, I mean, your church does.
Oh, a church, yeah, of course, you do a lot of teaching, actually, our pastor is on here right now, Gavin Ortland, so he does a lot of teaching.
Yeah, okay, very good. Uh, do we have a second to the motion on the resolution?
I'll second.
Very good, thank you, Commissioner Swift. Any more discussion? Then Cheryl, could we call the roll on this motion as amended?
Quilisi?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Lottis?
Oh, she's recused.
Oh, yes, sorry, Trent?
Yes.
And Swift?
Yes.
Terrific. So, um, you have your approval, work with Ludac, Lucas on the paperwork. But thank you, thank you for your flexibility and, uh, your willingness to work with the city on this, I think we'll have a good project.
Yes, thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you for your sign.
Yeah. I haven't met you all, but, but I, sorry I didn't introduce myself earlier, my name's Gavin, I'm the pastor of the church. Just want to say thank you for giving this such careful consideration.
Thank you for being...
Good project, good job.
Good project, good job.
Thank you, Gavin. I, I think you'll, you'll find if you ever encounter the commission again, that you'll see that all the commissioners take this job pretty seriously. And we're trying to do what's right for the city as well as for the applicants, and I think we worked that out this time, and I'm happy about it. Thank you. All right, uh, let's move on then to, uh, since we're, we're pulling item three, let's go to item four. Future agenda items. Lucas?
Yes. Thank you, so we have, our next meeting is, uh, scheduled for May third, it is a special meeting. Notifications have really been sent out to the masses, uh, regarding this item. It is a how, it's the housing element update. Uh, we're transitioning really from that fifth cycle housing element to the sixth cycle housing element. Um, and we have, uh, the consultant team that's going to be doing a presentation and then, and then, um, talking through any Q and A. It comes from both the body of this commission, as well as any of the members of the community that come out, um, to speak on this item.
Oh, just, just a moment, Lucas, I'm sorry. Commissioner Lottis can rejoin the meeting. I don't know if she can, oh, there you are, thank you. I apologize.
He's, she's rejoined, I, I saw her slip in. Back into the dais. So it, it's going to be, it's, I, I'm looking forward to this, to the housing element. Um, we only see this once every eight years, so, uh, you know, we sit on our hands for, for about eight years, and then we have an opportunity for about, uh, a year to eight months to, to really kind of influence how this housing element's going to be, um, crafted over the next, you know, subsequent eight years. So that's where we're at right now. Veronica Tams and associates are going to be the representatives that are going to be speaking on this matter, um, with the presentation, and then.
Well, this is not Rainey?
Wait, what, they're under Rainey and Associates, they're sub.
Oh, good.
The, the thing that I think this commission is going to be very pleased with is, is her knowledge of housing element law and the regulations that apply to that, and how intimately involved she is in, in this process. Um, so if we're going to get lost in the weeds, this is going to be that opportunity to do that. The first, as a first cut for this. So expect, expect to bring your, uh, your, your hats to, to talk and, and speak intimately about, about this if you so choose.
Bring your fine-toothed comb, yes.
Sharpen the pencil if needed, so I think.
Is there a staff report that is accompanying, accompanying this, um, or, or meeting, or is it just, are you just going to have it as a discussion?
No, I'm going to have a, I'll have a staff report that comes along with this, with this meeting as well. And I'll lay the framework for it. The presentation I will try to have beforehand, we're working on it currently. Um, I can't, I can't guarantee that I'll have that before the meeting, but if I can, um, I will include that as a part of the agenda report.
And if any commissioners have any questions on the arena, the regional housing needs assessment, that's part of this housing element for the sixth cycle. Um, you can also reach out to either, like, I'm sure Lucas, obviously, and then, um, myself or Matt Summers, the city attorney.
Yeah.
This, this will be going, this is a long process, so.
I, I have to say.
It sounds like it's going to be a long process, but I'll just tell you, from now until October, when we're looking to have city council adopted, we were always just looking at the, the, um, the timeframe for that, and it's, there's not a lot of time to, to get this done, so it's, it sounds like we've got a lot of time, but we really don't. We're going to be working like gangbusters to get this, uh, this sixth cycle up and moving, um, in compliance with, with our new.
There's a limited number of meetings between now and October, and every one of them has noticing requirements which further restricts how many opportunities you have to churn through this stuff.
Exactly.
I know the first, I have to say, the first time I read the housing element, I was surprised to see a list of specific APN parcel numbers in there in a document that was as general as I expected all of the general plan to be. Uh, is that something that's going to, that's going to recur in the next version? That is, there'll be a list of APNs proposed as potential sites for low-income housing?
That is a great question to bring to the meeting on the third.
Okay.
Yeah, so any of those, those types of questions that you're thinking about, definitely save those for the meeting on the third, because I think those are going to be the ones that we kind of dive into and kind of, kind of start to look at what that framework of that housing element's going to look like.
And, and you can on your own, if, um, if you so wish, you can go to SCAG, the Southern California Association of Governments, which has the, um, allocations by city, and I believe Ohio is, what, fifty-three, Lucas? Fifty-three with like.
We can, we can announce that because that is final.
Yeah, so.
That's a whole lot better than, I remember the last time around, it was more like three-hundred-and-fifty-three.
Three-seventy-one is our current allocation.
Three-seventy-one, you know, okay.
It's fifty.
Which was absurd on the face of it, but that's okay.
Fifty-three is a lot more manageable, for sure.
So, yeah, but you, that's a good resource to check out as well, SCAG.
And, and if you haven't, uh, pulled the housing element of the general plan off of the city website, I would suggest you do it. I did have one other question, Lucas. The, the changes that are, that are being proposed, are they going to be presented to us as a redline version of the housing element? Or are we not to that point yet?
Not to that point yet. Um, that, that's yet to be determined. I think it really depends on how much, how much redline we're, we're going to be looking at here. If it's a complete rewrite, uh, then it's, it's basically flush the old and here comes the new. Um, so I'm curious to see, they've got a word document of, of our housing element, so. I, I can't make any guarantees on that, I, I need, I need, um, to see it myself before we start looking at what, what, um, what sort of redline document it would look like.
I know, I've processed many times myself on proposals, uh, which this is sort of a proposal. And the more changes you have, the harder it is to read. But, uh, I would still personally be very interested to get a redline version. Uh, Commissioner Nolan, please, go ahead.
Yeah, I was, um, going to comment that I too would prefer a redline version, and having sat through, um, actually, it was interesting, when I first got on the planning commission, the city was behind on, because that would have been the fourth cycle, and they had to catch up, and then they did the sixth cycle, so I actually kind of got to go through two.
Yeah, we're right now in the fifth cycle, so yeah, you're right, there was kind of this.
Yeah, but there was a catch-up. But I did want to say that it was redline and it was so helpful going through it to have that redline. So if at all possible, I would agree with Commissioner Quilisi that, um, I would prefer that.
And in the meantime, between now and May third, which is a week from Monday, I would recommend that all of us brush up again on the existing housing element so that, so that you can make notes for yourself and, and ask about things that you think should be added, changed, or deleted. Um, and those are all valid, very valid topics for the meeting with the consultants.
Yeah.
Yeah, I support the redline version also, and particularly for, uh, policies. We, we really ought to be able to see the, the existing policies in comparison to any proposed changes.
I'm wondering, um, would it be possible for the city to provide a copy for us all of the housing element prior to that, the meeting on the third?
Are you wanting, are you talking about a, um?
Printed copy? I, well, how does everybody else feel? I, I mean, I hate to waste paper, but at the same time, I love to read through it and write notes and.
Yeah, I printed my own copy a while ago, but.
I'm not, well, how does everyone else feel?
Are you talking about, what, you're talking about getting a copy of the existing element?
Yeah, of the city supplying a copy of the existing housing element prior to the May third meeting for us all to look at and review.
Okay, I haven't looked at it, how many pages are we talking about?
Uh, it's over a hundred.
Yeah, that's why I'm kind of requesting it.
Yeah, it's a chunk.
Um, I don't need one, Lucas.
I can print my own, but I, but maybe if, uh, anybody makes a specific request, could that be honored?
Yes. Yeah, if you, if you're asking for one specifically, I may very well have a couple extra copies that were printed out and never, never distributed. So we can look at that.
Commissioner Nolan for sure would like a copy. Uh, Commissioner Trent or Swift, would you like a copy? Okay. Trent would like a copy.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
That's a fairly minor print job then, especially if you print on both sides of the page.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
And, um, okay, that's the May third, and then we've got a regular meeting on May?
May fifth.
Yes, okay, May fifth and then, and then the nineteenth, right, okay.
Yeah, so, so the, the meeting for the fifth, uh, the concept review is probably a question mark right now regarding three-oh-two South Montgomery. Um, we've sent out corrections, we're looking to, to get a response back. Um, we have a meeting scheduled at the end of this week to talk through, um, some of the additional information so that we're taking forward. Even though it's a concept review, we're taking forward something that has all, all the pieces so that when the commission's reviewing this, they can provide, I would say, a comprehensive, uh, comment to this, so that's.
It's hard to give meaningful feedback if we don't have meaningful data to look at.
Exactly, so that's what we're working with, with the applicant on right now, and they completely understand. Um, they're wanting to get, they're eager to, eager to get feedback as well, but we've, we've also got to make sure that the boxes are checked before it comes to this body.
Well, I know you'll do it right.
Right, the, uh, the other item is this, the general plan update, vision and guiding principles statement. And that's about a four-to-five-page document, once that's been finalized in, in a draft format. Um, I'm going to provide that to this commission and, and provide it on the website. So that will actually be coming to you very soon, I'm anticipating by this Friday. So you'll be getting that, um, ahead of the meeting, but there'll also be an agenda report that'll come with that as well for the fifth.
Okay, so it'll be part of the packet for the fifth.
Yeah, it'll be an attachment to, to the agenda report.
Okay. Any questions for Lucas on, on any of the future meetings? All right. Then, uh, what do we have left? We have commis, commissioners' comments. And beyond that, then, any comments from our acting director? I guess that's what you call yourself?
Maybe development manager.
Okay. Um, any commissioners have, have something you'd like to say that's of interest, uh, and relevant to the commission's practices here? Not at the moment, okay. Uh, Lucas, anything to add?
Uh, nothing to add, just, just so the, uh, commission is aware, there are several items that we have that will be coming before this commission that are in the pipeline currently. Um, I know at the beginning of the year, I had identified several items to this commission at one point. There have been several more that have been, that have been submitted at this point, um, and you, this commission will be seeing them. Some of them will require environmental review, so just, just be aware of that, um, coming forward. Uh, so there is definitely a lot on the horizon, um, to say.
Great. Great. Um, I notice we don't have, uh, city council liaison as an item on the agenda anymore. Have they given that up?
No, it, it's, it's supposed to be on there somehow, it got omitted, I don't know how it falls off the agenda, but it is meant to be on there.
Okay.
For discussion. I also saw on here, there was a, a report by, by Chair Quilisi regarding the MAC.
Oh, yes.
From April nineteenth.
That was, yes, two days ago. Nothing really much going on with the MAC, that, that meeting. I gave a report about the things that we've been doing. And I think back two days and I can't think of anything useful to discuss. Now, un, unlike the previous meeting where there was, uh, proposed AT&amp;T cell, cell tower and such, nothing going on this time, very, very quiet, not even clear that next month's meeting will be held for lack of anything to discuss. So. Thank you. On absent any other business before the commission, I declare the meeting adjourned at forty-nine after the hour. Thank you all very much. I appreciate your taking the time that you do to consider the cases that we have, and I'm sure the applicants appreciate your thoroughness as well. But again, personally, I want to thank you all for your diligence and urge you to, uh, read through that housing element before a week from Monday. Thank you all, and good night.
Thank you, Chair Quilisi.
Bye-bye.
Night.